First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone present this evening as well as those members of the public who are tuned in. Welcome to our June 15th, 2020 Lackawanna City Council regular meeting. Before we begin, why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right, please. I pledge allegiance to the republic.
Thank you. But to begin our caucus, there are certain administrative things that we do as housekeeping matters, departmental reports, one through five. We do have hearings from citizens. We will include them later on at the appropriate juncture under the waiver of the rules. We'll have approval of minutes. Going to agenda item number six, Director of Public Safety requests city council approval for selling the listed police vehicles previously purchased through federal assistance forfeiture funds and their ruling statutes. New replacement vehicles will be purchased under the same federal asset forfeiture fund. All proceeds from the sale of the aforementioned vehicles will be placed into the police department asset forfeiture fund account as required by federal statute. Any comments, anyone? Moving to communications from citizens, item number seven was originally from Paul Curran, but it's being withdrawn. We will not have to take that matter up. Item number eight, communication from Justin Barron, owner of Sunny Reds, request city council approval to host a food fair at establishment 1841 Abbott Road on the dates documented below, June 19th, June 26th, July 17th, July 18th, and July 19th. Food fair will consist of several mobile food trucks vendors that will fall under the umbrella of Sunny Reds. For the record and for the public, there was a meeting with the mayor and various members of the city council, Director of Development and Director of Public Safety regarding the one that had been run already and the required changes that need to be seen and enforced, especially the distancing rule, the mask rule. And I would also like to include at this time, I believe I sent the copy of an email to all the council members and some department heads, the appropriate department heads. I received an email at my personal computer last night from Kathy Jamel. That communication did not make this agenda even under a waiver of the rules. However, I would, in anticipating passing or entertaining this request from Justin Barron's and Sunny Reds, I would request that a copy of that be forwarded also to Justin Barron so that appropriate action can be taken to address the concerns of the neighbors who unfortunately were on the short end of the public function, outdoor function at Sunny Reds the last time with the parking, traffic air problems, and actually trash that was thrown on the neighbors' lawns, people were eating and finishing their food and just throwing their containers on the neighbor's lawn. So I would like that to accompany whatever communications we have with Justin Barron's and Sunny Reds. Does anyone else have any comments on this application?
Is there any live music or no? Just the food, council president?
As far as I know, it's just the food.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any application for, I didn't look at the entire application. I don't think it said it included music, so.
Are you talking about Sunny Reds?
Yeah.
There's also, there is a band, he took a five-day temporary, or five-day entertainment permit out. He's going to have a band the first two days and DJ the other three. That's what the entertainment license is for.
So that, on which dates then?
The first two dates listed, he's got a band, it's two dates in June, and then he's got three dates in July.
Yes.
And those are just a DJ to kind of coordinate things.
Councilman Sirdike, anything else on that?
Well, obviously they gotta be done by 11 o'clock, right?
Well, that was one of the concerns that the email from Kathy Jamel also addressed, the music. I don't know if it was the occasion of the weekend that they had this function, that the music was played beyond 11 o'clock, but as a regular course of business, I'm learning from the neighbors that that in fact does happen, that there's an issue with the music being played loudly beyond 11 o'clock, and also an issue of lighting. I've asked Director of Public Safety, John Wolfe, to be aware of that situation, and he did see the communication from Kathy Jamel. Director Wolfe, you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I'll reach out to the owner. We'll make sure that the music ends at 11:00. I'll check the lighting out also for that, for the parking lot and see exactly how bad it is. The parking situation on the road, on the side streets, we're going to have to work, everyone's going to have to work together. We've already discussed this with the owner of Sunny Reds regarding the parking. He said the biggest problem was on Sunday when they would, at 4:00, when they switch sides. So we'll work on that. We'll get some patrols down there if we have to, just to try to make that go smoother.
And additional garbage cans and disposal areas for this trash too.
Yep.
So the neighbors don't get subjected to that. Councilman Sirdike, anything else on your end on this?
No, no, I read the email from the concerned citizens. That's why I'm bringing it up. One other thing I might suggest that, put some contact information down for the owner so if any of the council members have any questions, they can call him. I see Mr. Curran's phone number was on here, but I couldn't see Mr. Barron's phone number anywhere on the application or on this part of the agenda. So I'd appreciate if he had his phone number on here or something. Thank you.
And if I could touch on that, typically what we submit is a entertainment license or a business registration, and it's a prefab form which contains all your owner information, your phone numbers. In this case, Councilman Sirdike, the reason that wasn't done is because for the agenda to get it on, being that the next meeting wasn't until mid-July, they submitted a letter versus the standard application form. Now today I did email the application form for Sunny Reds. It should be in the emails you received with all the other communications, and on that is a phone number.
Oh, okay.
So you should be good. And also, council president, I was able to locate my cheat sheet there that I'm looking for, so we are good to go on that.
I appreciate that. Any other comments on the Sunny Reds application?
If I could just say one thing, Mr. President, I spoke with the owner, Justin Barron, today regarding questions he had about the softball and kickball league starting up, and we did touch on the events that he's put in the applications for. And one thing he specifically did express to me was his intention to end the music at 10:00, just to make sure there's absolutely no issue. So that's one issue that I know he's aware of and already looking to address.
Perfect. Good. Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
All right, anybody else on this issue? The second item that we'll take up under the waiver of the rules is the designation of South Park and parts of Ridge Road as a state highway. It's my understanding that this has been done on several occasions in the past by the city council, authorizing and requesting that the state adopt those portions of the highways as a state highway for obvious benefits, for plowing, for maintenance and such. Anyone have any comments on that? All right, the next item is a request from Councilman Dean Moretti regarding moving and no parking from here to corner sign on Leonard Street. Councilman Moretti, is there anything you want to add on that?
No, it just, it has become a hazard with cars parking too close to the corner. Zapier Pools, apparently cars that pull in his lot or pulled out and have hit a few cars backing out, and that it was causing a problem. And the people that live there across from him have ample parking on both sides of the building, and so it wasn't putting anybody out by moving the sign, so. But no, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Moretti. Anyone else have any questions or issues on that topic? All right, moving to this peddler's permit request by Christopher, and I don't remember how to pronounce his last name, Angler or Angbert. And I'm talking, addressing this question to Jeff, our city clerk, and looking at the communications that went back and forth between yourself, Jeff, the building inspector's office, and the applicant, it looks like his application initially had been denied by your office or something?
That's correct. Initially, he applied to sell sparklers at the Family Video Store on Ridge Road, and I addressed the issue. Mr. Anger had sent the application, you see, C code enforcement. I got a call from Scott Hayes, our code enforcement officer, who advised me that as per city code and New York state law, they could not sell so-called fireworks, especially within the city limits of Lackawanna. So we had nothing further to act on at that point. So based on the information I received from code enforcement, I sent Mr. Anger denial saying that based on our ordinances and state law that he was denied for his peddler's permit. Further conversation with Drew Ortega and our director of development, Rich Stanton, found a way where we could make it possible, because sparklers technically don't fall under fireworks, that there shouldn't be an issue as long as they comply with all our other ordinances and COVID-19 regulations, and of course, the peddler's permit process. So I had a conversation with Mr. Stanton, who advised me that he's going to make an executive decision, and as they play nice, everything is good.
So everyone seems to be on board with allowing this at this point then, right?
That's correct. They still have some information to provide us. It's contingent upon them doing that, which is what I put in the, on your sheets, you know, they're approved pending their compliance with the remainder of the application, sending us the employee's name so we could do an adequate background check and payment of all fees. And once they do that, they should be good to go for their operation over there at Family Video.
Okay, thank you. As far as Director of Development or Director of Public Safety, Rick or John, any issues that you see on this?
We don't have, I think Jeff summarized where we're at. We didn't have an additional issue.
All set.
John, anything on your end?
All set.
Okay. Any of the council members have any comments, questions on this? Okay. The next item, we've been requested again by the resident on Milnor Avenue to reconsider allowing the street closure for the Fourth of July. She indicates now that the use of fireworks in her first application or communication was not appropriate. They're only talking about sparklers. My recollection is there were also questions of other devices that were being used, that were being interfered with, the bypassing cars that would have to be moved. That doesn't seem to kind of jive with just the sparkler aspect. Furthermore, the original application was for a birthday party, and the closure of the street, I believe, was from 4:00 to 11:00 or something along those lines. My feeling personally is that unless the street, unless the function that's being requested serves a significant public interest and involves a good part of the community or is open to the entire community, the Lackawanna community, allowing this sort of a street block party, so to speak, invites everyone to, or anyone, to request the same for their location. And before you know it, we're going to be requested to close numbers of streets based on this precedent. I don't think it's wise. I don't think a birthday party is sufficient reason to close a street. The Fourth of July celebration can be had elsewhere. There are venues available that could be rented, where parties involving larger numbers can be had if we weren't involved in this COVID-19 situation. But even with the petition that this young lady had signed, wherein some of the neighbors were in favor of it, I believe it includes about 10 addresses, maybe 20 or 25 signatures, but it doesn't even address how the neighbors on the bordering streets, the north and south side of Milnor Avenue would feel about the additional traffic that their streets would have to bear with a seven-hour closure of Milnor Avenue. I don't think it's a good idea, but the floor is open up to any other comments, gentlemen, if you care to.
I'm in total.
Yeah, Director of Public Safety, John?
Yeah, Fred, I'm in total agreement with you, 100%.
Thank you. Anyone else have some comments?
That's in the second ward, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And John, yeah, I'm the same thing. I don't think it's a good idea. I mean, you're going to open up a can of worms, and it wasn't a good idea two weeks ago, it's not a good idea today.
Yeah. Yeah, I would tend to agree. Anyone else? And then as far as the last item for our brief caucus, under table items, I'm going to renew and ask that the letters from the last council meeting that the matter was adjourned and moved to today's meeting involving the store licensure at 161 Steelawana Avenue, I'm going to ask that that be reconsidered and appropriate action be taken for that venue, because people are, it's impacting people's quality of lives on that street and that general area, the location of that store. And while it might be prudent to perhaps consider a suspension for a period of time, the ultimate goal would be to seek a revocation of that license, depending on whether or not the owner can address the concerns of the public and the police department, for that matter, in that area. Director of Public Safety, Wolf, was kind enough to put together hard copies of all the responses, the calls that came to the police department involving that area, and I just couldn't believe the number. Now, that's not to give the impression that all of the calls dealt with what the store was happening inside the store, that's not accurate, but it's causing a nuisance on the outside of the stores. It's allowing people to congregate at all hours. People can't pass in their vehicles, they can't enjoy their own private properties because they're being affected by, and a lot of these people are not even from Lackawanna, they're from outside the community. So I would ask that you consider some action that might be appropriate as council to take on the license at 161 Steelawana. I would ask whether it's appropriate, and perhaps now is appropriate, our city attorney, Rick Judah, to comment at this time as to what might be considered appropriate.
So we have a statute, as you guys know, under the city ordinance, we can revoke their license. However, it does recall for, it does call for a special hearing and a notice be published. You could take summary action, but even if you take summary action, you still have to conduct a hearing. I suggest you go forth with the hearing and see what the owner of the establishment has to say for themselves. It'll be two weeks before we get the hearing scheduled, but I think we should do it.
Can I, can I, can I, real quick?
Yes.
Just keep in mind that the hearing is requested by the store owner. If the council takes action to close the store, there's no hearing required unless the store owner requests one.
And that may be the way the legislation is written. It's my opinion, however, and I think Rick might share this, that whenever you deprive an individual of a license, it requires due process, and that means a hearing of sorts to allow a rebuttal of any evidence and any charges that might be brought against the establishment. So I wouldn't be comfortable revoking his license or possibly even suspending it without giving him an opportunity to be heard.
And second, my try man?
Yes, Councilman Ingram.
Secondly, if he's not here, if he's in Yemen and cannot get back here, can we do anything till we get back?
Well, that's a question. I mean, instead of hearing, if he doesn't come back in time, that would speak for itself.
Because he can't get back because of.
But I'm not thinking somebody else is running that store right now, right?
Because his brother.
Family member. Yeah.
Whatever agent for the company or the individual, you know, they should appear. If he doesn't appear, that's not, you know, all we're required to do is have the hearing. If he can't make it, it's not our, it's not our fault.
Well, here's my.
Certainly aren't going to allow business to operate because he's overseas, especially in a fashion and a manner that's being complained of.
But Willis Lawrence said, because he can't get here because the state won't let him in.
That doesn't matter.
Right, and I agree. Listen, he's been warned, this business has been warned numerous times. Johnny, you know, the police have been called numerous times for various reasons, but it all evolves around that store, in and outside the store. He's been asked numerous times not to stay open until the appropriate time, and he has. So whether he can make it or not, I think at some point you just got to move forward, do what you guys feels best, and go with it.
And the only alternative to that is just to continue doing business as usual. I can't see that as appropriate, especially with the summer months coming. The problem's only going to get worse. But Councilman Ingram, would you want to adjourn this pending his coming back from Yemen?
What I would like to do is, I'm going to go down there tomorrow and talk to the owner and say, we should have a hearing, you know what I'm saying? And maybe he sends something for his brother, whoever runs it, because his brother's running it, whatever, they can be, you know, but we should have.
I don't know if it's appropriate for you to go down and speak individually. I would suggest that not happen, but that's up to you. And redirecting the issue to Rick Judah, Rick, have you been able to identify any hearing dates as of yet?
Well, I'm just looking at the statute. I mean, I could pick the hearing date, and we could send out a notice, but we've got to publish it in the Lackawanna front page and give them at least 10 days' notice. So I guess as quick as it can be published, I would have to add 10 days to that. So you know, you're looking at a minimum of at least two weeks anyway, and now we're looking at beginning of July.
And is that for a suspension only or for a revocation?
That's for the revocation of the certificate under section 88-8.
Can a suspension be enacted immediately or not?
Well, you can actually revoke it summarily, and you could suspend it pending a hearing. Either way, he's going to be entitled to a special hearing on it within 10 days, so. If you do it that way, you don't have to publish.
Anyone else on that?
I know that, once we do it that, if we do it that way, I'm going to have, because he live, because he live in the first ward, he is going to come see me. I just want to be right there.
Councilman, we can't hear you. You're breaking up.
As he being the resident of the first ward, was he get, if he get the suspension, whatever, I get, he is going to come see me, you know? He's going to actually, he's going to actually talk to me. And as his representative, I have to be able to tell him, tell him the truth. He may not want to hear what I'm telling.
Well, if he speaks you out, I can understand that, but I might just go down there on your own. I mean, it's up to you. But I would prefer, if this is as much of a problem as it seems to be, that we pick a date, set a hearing date, give sufficient notice, and move forward with it, and don't suspend the license until the hearing.
I agree.
Revocation hearing.
I agree. That's the best thing to do, or you're just going, this is going to go through the whole summer if we don't do something now.
Yeah, let's do it now.
I agree. And don't forget, Fred, we spoke about the SLA, they're also involved with this.
Yes.
And they're not up and running.
They've got a two-pronged approach as far as what they can do. They have the criminal, the act itself that was, that's being charged, and that subjects the SLA to review their liquor license and possibly revoke that, fine them, or suspend them. So that's going to take place too.
Right.
Yeah, so. All right, Rick, I would ask that you pick a date appropriate, two or three weeks out to give a sufficient notice and a time that you could be available, and you would need who to testify? Or is that something you'll work on during that time period?
Correct. I'll have to review the complaints and get the city's case together, but that'll give him an opportunity to respond or to have a representative on his behalf respond.
All right.
I mean, obviously, if he's attempting to manage his business from overseas, then he should have whoever his local representative is and who's familiar with the operation of the business appear and defend him.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, then, those matters will come up under waiver of the rules. Mr. City Clerk, would you call the roll? This meeting is formally called to order.
All right, this meeting is being called to order. We already did the Pledge of Allegiance during caucus. Roll call, Council Ingram.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Sirdike.
President.
Morano.
Here.
Department Head's Law.
Here.
Development.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Controller.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
Okay, we have hearings from citizens. As Council President Morano stated, we did receive one, which will be addressed during the waiver of the rule portion of this meeting. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 1st, 2020, and the special meeting of June 8th, 2020.
Morano moves to adopt the minutes of June 1st, 2020, and June 8th, 2020, as written.
Second, Mr. Ingram.
Ingram?
Yes.
All right, so I have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt minutes of June 1st, 2020, and the special meeting of June 8th, 2020, is written. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0, departmental reports, one through five.
Morano moves to receive and file departmental reports, one through five.
Moretti, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file departmental reports, one through five. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0, communications from department division heads, number six. Director of Public Safety requests the city council approve selling the following police vehicles which had been previously purchased through the federal asset forfeiture fund statutes. New replacement vehicles will be purchased under the same federal asset forfeiture fund. They include a 2003 Honda, a 2005 Lexus, and a 2009 Ford. All proceeds from the sale of the aforementioned vehicles will be placed in the police department asset forfeiture fund account as required by the federal statute.
Morano moves to approve request.
Ingram, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to approve request. Ingram?
Yes.
Morano, or Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0. Communications from citizens, number seven, we discussed during caucus, Mr. Curran has withdrawn his request for entertainment permit, so we'll skip seven and go to number eight. Justin Barron's owner, Sunny Reds, requests city council approval to host a food fair at his establishment, 1841 Abbott Road, and the dates documented below. The food fair will consist of several mobile food trucks/vendors, MFPs, that will fall under the umbrella of Sunny Reds. He has personally met with the mayor, the council president, Director of Development, who approved this format in principle. In addition, he has applied for an outdoor entertainment license for the same dates, and those dates are June 19th, June 26th, and July 17th, 18th. June 26th, and July 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2020. And also, all vendors or MFTs at the food fair will be the responsibility of Sunny Reds and all applicable health department permits and required COVID-19 guidelines. She'll also be the sole responsibility of Sunny Reds. And it says there, the application is processing, but he has since submitted his application, which I included to you guys in the email.
Morano moves to approve the MFT and entertainment licenses condition on also that Sunny Reds receives the copy of the email sent from the concerned citizen Kathy Jamil.
Second, Sirdike.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to approve the MFTs and entertainment license and stipulation that the copy of emails are received by Sunny Reds from concerned citizens. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carrier 4-0. Need a motion to waive the rules?
I so move.
Moretti second.
So we have a motion by Moretti, second by, or I'm sorry, Morano, second by Moretti, waive the rules. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carrier 4-0. We have a communication from Mayor I follow. She requests city council approve two resolutions supporting New York State Senator Tim Kennedy's legislation designated South Park Avenue and Ridge Road as state highways.
Morano moves to receive and file and act on the resolutions.
Second, Sirdike.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to receive and file act on resolutions. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carrier 4-0. The first resolution, whereas New York State Senator Tim Kennedy has introduced legislation designed as New York State Senate Bill S 01550, which designates South Park Avenue as a state highway, be it resolved that the city council hereby approves of and requests the enactment of the aforementioned legislation, and be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to request that the aforementioned legislation be enacted and forwarded said request to the state legislature.
Morano moves to adopt the resolution as written.
Second, Sirdike.
Forward said resolution to the New York State Senate and New York State Assembly.
So we have a motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to adopt resolution as written. Direct City Clerk to forward said resolution to the New York State Senate and New York State Assembly. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carrier 4-0. The second resolution, where New York State Senator Tim Kennedy has introduced legislation designed as New York State Senate Bill 01, I'm sorry, S 01548, which designates Ridge Road as a state highway. Be it resolved that the city council hereby approves and requests the enactment of the aforementioned legislation and further and further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to request that the aforementioned legislation be enacted and forward said request to the state legislature.
Morano moves to adopt resolutions as written. Direct City Clerk to forward said resolution to the New York State Senate and Assembly.
Ingram second.
So we have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt resolution as written. Direct City Clerk to forward said resolution to the New York State Senate and New York State Assembly. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carrier 4-0. Also under waiving of the rules, Councilmember Moretti requests the city council approve relocating the "No Parking Here" corridor sign on both sides of Leonard Street, 100 feet from Abbott Road to alleviate hazardous conditions entering and exiting the street.
Morano moves to approve the request, refer to the Law Department to draft an ordinance and the EPW Commissioner to relocate the sign.
Moretti second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Direct the Law Department to draft an ordinance, EPW Commissioner to relocate the sign. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carrier 4-0. Chris Englerd from Keystone Novelties LLC requests city council approve his request for a peddler's permit to sell sparklers from the parking lot of Family Video 954 Ridge Road. After consulting with the city clerk's office and code enforcement, this permit has been provisionally approved by the director of development pending submission of the required application documents, fees, and associated background checks.
Morano moves to approve peddler's permit pending compliance with the application requirements.
Moretti second.
A motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve peddler's permit pending compliance with the application requirements. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carrier 4-0. Also, Council President Morano has added that communication regarding the closing of Milnor Avenue on July 4th.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Morano moves to receive and file the communication. I move further to deny the request.
Moretti second.
So I have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file and deny the request. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Request denied 4-0. Tabled items?
I'm.
Need a motion to remove the items from the table.
I move that I, the item regarding 161 and the letters regarding 161 Steelawana and it's the store's licensing be removed from the table.
Ingram second.
A motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to remove from the table from the last council meeting, all items regarding 161 Steelawana Avenue, including concern or letters from concerned citizens, have removed from the table and make it actionable. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carrier 4-0.
Morano moves that the Law Department be directed to prosecute the charges accusing 161 Steelawana of violating its licensure from the city of Lackawanna to operate a grocery store within the parameters as indicated of record and to include either a suspension and or revocation of that license.
Ingram second.
They have a motion by Morano, second by by Ingram, to have the city attorney pursue charges against 161 Steelawana Avenue with regards to their violating their terms and conditions with the city as to their business model that was agreed upon by the council. And furtherance also to have a hearing scheduled, is that correct, Council President, for either a hearing or sus, I'm sorry, either a suspension or a revocation?
Uh, yes, I would direct the Law Department to prosecute either a suspension or revocation or both of the subject license.
Point of order.
Yeah.
The statute says that it would be a public hearing and then the council will make the ultimate decision after I issue my report. So it'll be a public hearing and then I'll make a report to the council and the council will take additional action based on that report.
So the action taken by the council now will just be strictly directing you to move forward?
Move forward for the hearing, yes.
Okay. Everybody clear on that?
Yes.
All right, Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carrier 4-0.
One additional item that had been tabled, just like an update, and it's the Law Department again.
Ingram Avenue.
Activity, Rick, on that vacant property on Ingram Avenue.
Okay, after I spoke to you today, Council President, I reached out to the individual in question, and I advised him that if I didn't receive a written plan of action with respect to that property by this Friday, that the city was going to take action to re to recup to re to to recover possession of that property again. So once I get that matter, once I get that plan, I will provide the council with a copy, and I would ask the council for the direction as to whether or not they want me to take possession of the property or allow the proposed plan to go forward.
Let me ask a question.
There was a, excuse me a minute, Mr. Council, Councilman Ingram, there had been a request for a meeting during your meeting and mine today, Rick. I suggested a possible breaking up of the property that may satisfy some.
Correct.
Other interested parties who want to put homes there. Maybe the current owner owner would be willing to sell portions at a reasonable price to accommodate those who may be interested in building there and still keep some property for himself to to develop on his own. Would a meeting be appropriate to hash those out?
Yeah, I I'll be honest with you. Okay, as as city attorney, I'm here to enforce the law and to, you know, and I'm looking for direction from you. As far as meetings go and decisions that you as a council body have have to make, I really don't care to be a part of those. If you want me to reach out to him and find out what his intentions are or if he's willing to do that, I'll do that. But I think, you know, I'm kind of being the middle man here on something where, you know, I can either get the property back or let him hang on to it. So it's it's, you know, it's it's either the council's decision or the mayor's decision, but we all got to be on the same on the else on the same page here. Personally, I have no desire to meet with the guy, but if if he wants to meet and present a plan, I'll certainly take to bring it before the council so that, you know, your honorable body can make a decision. And and I don't mean to be, you know, I I don't mean to disrupt the process or anything here, but, you know, quite frankly, there's been a violation of of the the terms and conditions of the reversion. And I'm, you know, I'm going back and forth and it's costing me time and effort. And, you know, quite frankly, the guys had both the prior owner and the current owner have had plenty of time to do something with it. So I'll try one last time, but, you know, next time this comes up, well, first of all, it's not going to come up again because we're going to do things differently going forward. But I'll certainly reach out to him once I get that plan. And and actually, I'll reach out to him before the plan. If you want to, I'll let him know so that by Friday, he can he can consider that and put it in writing if that's what he wants to do. But I think we have every right to retake the property, and if he wants to buy one of the lots, sell it back to him. But, you know, I leave that up to the body up to, you know, to the up to you, the council as a as a body to make a decision on that.
Has the mayor indicated her preference on this?
And 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 Fred, not to, again, not to interrupt, but, you know, when I when I'm at these meetings, it's not my decision. So I I mean.
Well, you know, Rick, I'm sorry that you're being placed in or you feel you're being placed in the middle here. But my understanding, based on our conversations at prior meetings, was there was going to be a meeting scheduled and then you were going to do that. I'm sorry if I misunderstood that. But I understand that your your position as enforcing the the laws of the city are paramount here, and I respect that. And and there's no intention by this council to put you in the middle so that you're made to look like a bad guy or something like that. But there's still some some wavering between the council and the mayor's office. Who makes the decision to prosecute the regurgiter clause? The mayor just tell you to go ahead or do we?
Or the council, sure.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, either either you as a council should direct me or the mayor. Here's what I what I want to do. I'll give a report to the to the council as to how big this parcel is, as to what, I'll talk to Rich in in development and see how many lots can be divided that it could be divided into. And we'll speak to the current owner to see what his plans are. And, you know, you're right, maybe there's something that can be done here that all parties are satisfied. But, you know, I just want to bring it to a head, and and I'm sure you do, too.
Yeah.
So so I'll reach out to him. It's hard to have a meeting now with with the COVID-19 and everything, but I'll reach out to him one more time and 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 I don't want to go back and forth. I want his plan. And, you know, I I don't want to, you know, I don't want to be played by this guy. Let me let me put it to you that way.
Well, and we had requested plans in the past. I don't think we received a proposal regarding that. But Councilman Ingram wanted.
Yeah. Listen, I'm just taking you straight to the point. I feel we just should take the land back. I think what was done was wrong, and I have people that are ready to go to war behind this. This is not the first time a situation like this came up, where 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 it was, we just went through this a couple times, a couple years ago. This was done by a former councilman who knows the rules of regulation and did not abide by the rules of regulation. I have no disrespect for the businessman that bought the property. He knew what was going on, too. The city should take the land, take it back, let the residents be on what like it's supposed to be done. I don't care what plan that he may be building on, because we have folks that their lives were jeopardized. They were they were handicapped by this. This cannot go on. Take the land back. That's my opinion, and it's not going to change.
I think, Councilman Ingram, anyone else care to be heard on this?
Yeah. I'll second that.
Well, I don't think it's in the form of a motion.
Yeah, I know.
Exactly. What exactly are you doing, Councilman Sirdike?
We've been arguing about this for years. We got to do something pretty soon. Thank you.
All right.
So I'll report back to the council via email as of Friday.
All right. And as far as our Mr. City Clerk, perhaps, what depending on what the outcome is of Rick's communication with the new owner, we may have to have this placed on the agenda again to direct some action one way or the other.
I'll just wait for whatever direction I'm given.
Very good. Anyone else on anything else? If not, I make a motion, Morano.
Council President?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
We got old business? Yeah, I'll I'll bring up some old business. At the March 2nd meeting, there was a request by the Commissioner of Public Works regarding sewer laterals. He was requiring an ordinance from us to enforce the repair of sewer laterals so we could pave our streets in the second ward. And it was stated that there were several avenues of financial relief for these laterals and time restraints for each. I was just wondering what's going on with that. Tony, our Commissioner of Public Works, actually, it was tabled March 2nd. So I just wonder what's going on with the lateral problem so we could pave some of those streets over there in the second ward. Thank you.
Well, go ahead. The information for the relief from LCDC was mailed out to all the presidents on Keever and Milnor. They haven't gotten any response back. It was if anybody wanted, if they were going to fix their laterals. Law Department was working on an ordinance.
No, 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 no. It's not true. You don't need an ordinance.
Okay.
No ordinance. I can't draft an ordinance directing the repair of the streets. We're obligated to repair the streets. If they are responsible for the laterals, all we have to do is send them a letter and tell them if they don't repair it, then then we're going to we're going to repair it at their expense. And if that's what the council wants me to do, I will, given that there's been no response. It was my understanding that the LCDC was going to give us some type of a a program or some funding to help some of these people.
That that did happen. The addresses that I gave to you, I gave to Lauren in the LCDC, and she mailed out all the applications and all the information, how residents could apply for this loan.
Okay, then why is this coming to me?
No, it wasn't to you. It was.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I think Councilman Sirdike mentioned when he went over the tabled item that it referred to an ordinance. Is that accurate, Councilman Sirdike?
Yes, he, the commissioner was requesting that the council pass an ordinance to enforce the repairs of sewer laterals.
So that's where that came from, Rick.
Okay. You don't need an ordinance. If if you want me to sue these people to collect money to 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 pay for the repairs, then I'll do that. But other than that, my hands are tied. Or or to bring some type of court action to force them to repair it.
In that situation, then, those two streets were earmarked for $140,000 in paving repairs, which for each street was $100,000, came from black grant money. And if we need to repair these residents. repair these residents' laterals before the street could be paved, you're looking at a minimum of $10,000 for each house, which is at least five houses on both those streets, which means I'll have to ask for more money, put it in that project to have those repaired.
Well, we're not going to repair them. The city's not going to repair them, are we?
Well, the, the city is not going to, uh, repave the street without the laterals being repaired. If the homeowners don't repair them, uh, then we're, are we forced to, to repair them? Or is the city forced to repair them?
I don't think so.
Two options are if you don't repair them, that's, the street will look like it is right now within three to five years. Uh, if you do repair them, obviously the street won't look like that, but it's just going to collapse sink, the puddles are just going to develop again if those laterals aren't repaired. So that, that's where we are with that. We haven't went out to bid or I haven't asked for any, any further action on those two streets until this was rectified.
How long ago did the letters go out?
Uh, before the, before the virus hit, back in early March, early March.
I mean, Tony and I could do a follow-up letter, but I guarantee, what are you going to get? You're going to get one out of 10 houses that are going to respond, I'm guessing.
So the options are.
I'll, we'll be a little bit more threatening in the next letter.
Well, the options are what then? Not to repave the street or repave the street and have it now. Five more years, it'll be the same thing over again, or we, the city undertakes the responsibility to, to repair the laterals, puts it on their tax rolls or tax bills or whatever. Yeah. I guess that's our only options, right?
I think so.
Well, uh, do we, as a council, want to take any action today? Do we want, are we asking our city attorney to send letters one more time to get a response? He's probably right. We're lucky if we get one response, we're still going to have to make that decision whether to repair those laterals on our own, bite that financial bullet and then put the, uh, the cost of it on the, on the individual owner's, uh, tax bill. I, I don't know what kind of a lawsuit could be brought back. What's that, Tony?
Just to give you, just to give you a little more information on that, if we go where we were going to repair, we're going to have to, uh, go ahead and bid the street out as it is and then put change orders in as the contractor comes up on these laterals because they could be different costs. I guess it's depending on the depth of the lateral or situation and of the damage. So I can't give you, say it's $7,000 for, just to give you a number. I can't say it's $7,000 for each home. Until we see what, what's underneath there, we won't know the exact rights on each home.
Well, Councilman Sir Lake, you brought it off the table. What do you want to do with this?
Oh, it was just a table item that I brought up. Like, I just wanted to bring up old business and, uh, see what, what we could do. I don't know. I don't know what we should do.
Well.
Probably, there's more than, there's more than 10 in the second ward. There's probably 30 of them. And we've been talking about this for three years.
There are in the total second, yeah, but the, not, not on those two streets. There's five on those two streets. There are 10, or there's more than 10 throughout the whole second ward. There's probably 50 to 75 throughout the whole second ward.
I thought, I thought we were going to like.
Those two streets, we, but.
Tony, Tony, can you get me, I think you said you had some, I, I, I need proof that these laterals, I, I know we could go there and we see the dips in the pavement and that, but has any type of testing been done? I think you said the county or, or the sewer district or somebody, um, I, I just want, before I go after somebody, I want verification that they have a broken lateral. What if we go after them and there's no broken lateral?
Well, yes, I do have, uh, letters, I could see seed on the letters from the county that they sent to the residents identifying the problem as a, as a collapsed lateral, which are the residence problem.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion? You give me a copy of those letters tomorrow and then you and I work on a joint letter that we'll send to every homeowner and we're going to copy the council and we're going to tell them in the letter that unless they respond by the next council meeting, the council may take action against them to enforce the repair of that property.
I'll bring you that in the morning, yes.
Can I ask you a question, Tom?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Lauren said they were supposed to, Lauren had money that she was going to help them with. Maybe we can find out, did some of them contact her? Find out, give her a call. I can give her a call tomorrow. I want to see if someone contacted her and if she worked with some of them. So we'll know.
I think in the first letter, they were, they were advised to contact the LCDC if they needed funding. Weren't, weren't they, Tony?
Yes, correct. They were, they were sent the application, all the information. When I spoke to Lauren, I don't know, a few weeks back, no one had responded to those letters. As of today, I, you know, I can't say yes or no if anybody responded, but the last time I spoke to her, no one responded to those letters. And there is a timeframe I, I, and applying for those, those loans. So, I mean, if people want to do that, they really have to start moving on it. That's it.
I think, I think unfortunately that's what we have to do.
Thank you.
Because you can't pave any more streets in the second ward, so that's all taken care of.
Okay.
And, uh, as far as our city clerk, Jeff, are these items that are, are tabled, perhaps we can put them under old business so that we don't lose track of them? They're on our agenda as reminders?
We have, I have a system in place for that. I don't have that as a table item. Uh, I'll have to look tomorrow, but I have a, uh, a system where after 60, the council had a directive in 1991 that any table items over 90 days automatically become received and filed and no further action is taken. And I, I put those in a tickler file, so I keep track of those. I have a log of all tabled items and that particular item I don't have down as a table item. It could have been, we'll, we'll, we'll check on this again at this meeting or that meeting. I don't know that it was officially put on the table per se. I'm not saying it wasn't, uh, but I don't have it. But to your, to your point, we already have a system. After 60 days, I send a letter to the council saying that this item has been tabled for 60 days. At 90 days, it becomes null and void, so you may want to start thinking about what you're going to do, uh, you know, either now or within 30 days for this item, or it's going to become a moot point. So that system is in place. And like I said, before the meetings, when I do the agenda, I look at my list of table items to see if anything's coming up that is getting, is getting near the deadline, uh, and it goes on the agenda at that time. And that item, I just looked when, uh, Councilman Sir Lake said it was tabled and I, I don't have it as a table item. And that could be an error on my end. I don't know. I'll have to check on that tomorrow.
Councilman Sir Lake, how did you identify that matter as a tabled item?
Uh, I read the minutes of the March second meeting and it said the request was tabled by the council.
Okay. So I could have, it's not, you know, a possibility I may have missed that, um, as rare as that is, uh, but, uh, we'll look into that tomorrow.
I don't, I'm, I'm just kind of brought it up as old business. I didn't really realize it was tabled.
Well, there's a, there's, there's a difference between old business and a tabled item for, you know, um, old business is something like, uh, you get a, you receive a communication, you kind of discuss it and say, okay, well, we'll get back to it. We have someone look into it or someone look into it and we'll, uh, we'll get back to you with an answer. A tabled action is obviously voted to be tabled, no further action until further information is received. Uh, that goes into an official tabled, uh, section of, of my, uh, notekeeping and record keeping. And like I said, it's, uh, I review those to see if anything's coming to date. And like I said, is there a possibility that that slipped through? I, I suppose. You're saying it was, it said it was tabled. I get, I imagine it was. So, um, we'll have to, uh, look at that tomorrow and see just where we're at. Uh, and, and if I could just continue on that though, uh, Council President, I, the legend, the, the ordinance that Councilman Sir Lake's referring to, if I recall correctly, was, was asking what options the city had with regards to billing the homeowner in the event that the city had to repair the lateral, whether or not they could add it to their tax bill or whether or not they couldn't. And it was referred, uh, for, for further opinion.
That was, that was a long time ago. Yeah, that was, that was last year when we were talking about that. This, this was just, uh, you know, Tony was trying to get our streets paved this summer and the laterals had wanted to be fixed first. That's all. So.
All right. Well, let me look at it tomorrow and I'll, uh, I'll send the council and, uh, city attorney an email as to what, what I found and you guys, uh, obviously already have a plan in place anyway.
Okay. Thank you. And then one, one other piece of old business. So what about the resignation of the second ward councilman? What's, what's going on with that?
Uh, he resigned.
Yes. What's going on so that people of the second ward are going to be represented in the future? I was just wondering.
Is your question, should we appoint or should we?
No, 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 no. I'm just wondering what, what, what the process is going to be or?
I, I don't understand your question.
What is going on with, uh, us picking a replacement for the second ward councilman seat?
Well, I think the, the next step would be for us to advertise and request resumes and have, um, interviews.
Sure. Great. Whatever. Just wondering what's going on.
Anyone else? All right. I renew my motion to adjourn.
Moretti seconds.
See, a motion by Morano, second by Moretti to adjourn the meeting. Ingram?
Yeah.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sir Lake?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
All right. Carrie four, four zero. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Jean.